The following program is sponsored by The Greek, Ely's Radio Shack dealer at 570 Altman in downtown Ely, and brought to you as a public service by Georgetown Media in Ely, Nevada. Ely City Council Meeting, September 22nd, 2022.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I don't know if we have anybody here for an indication tonight, so we will move on to roll call.
Mayor Robinson.
President.
Councilman Flankis.
Here.
Councilman Carson, the pastor, Councilman Spear.
Here.
Councilman Alworth.
President.
Councilman Williams Harper.
Here.
City Senator H. Grant for Pratt and Fair. City Attorney.
Here.
Public Works Supervisor for Gray Pratt.
Here.
City Engineer and Author.
Here.
City Police Chief Henry Bassett. City Building Official Peterson.
Here.
City Administrative Assistant Todd.
Great comment.
Hello.
Hello. Would that move on to item two, public comment? You will state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes.
My name is Bill Wolf, and I did want to come from the council and say, I've had, the last couple of weeks, I've had three different interactions with the city, and they've all been terrific, by gosh. The drain down there at the corner of Ninth and Avenue G had plugged up, and with all the rain, there was a day ass flood right there, excuse my French. And the guys got in there, and they cleaned it out, and it turns out, I guess, there's some other problem that the guys are working on. So, like I said, we did complain, people showed up right away, started dealing with it. The work they're doing on Ninth, as far as put down, I don't know, chip steel, overlay, whatever it is, the guys have been super nice, they kept us informed when we sought asked what the schedule was, they were very helpful and informative, and very professional in all their dealings, and they did great. And so, those guys did a really great job. And then, the other day, we had a water pipe break in our basement, and by God, they came right over and shut the water off at the meter, and then, once they got it fixed, it was about five o'clock when they got it fixed, and they got somebody over there before everybody went home. So, like I said, we've had three interactions, and they've all been positive, so I don't know, people probably don't say that very often, so I figured I'd better come up and say, the guys are all doing good, thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Any other public comment?
Mr. Mayor, on your agenda, item 6B3, do refer to a letter of support in charge to local Internet service. Do you refer to local Internet as being DSL mainly, which in fact has been gone for years? DSL is in the U-verse as the Internet standard in Ely or Starlink. Mr. Mayor, on your agenda, item 6B7, would you consider revising the Ely City Code Title 4, Chapter 2, regarding directions incorporates current policy and practices, and may get other necessary changes throughout? There's nothing in the packet on any of that to see what the, for the public to see what you're doing. Open meeting law is clear. Mr. Mayor, on your agenda, item 6B12, would you consider approval of wireline crossing agreement by and among the badger and railway foundation, City of Ely and beyond telephone? Again, there's nothing in the packet for the public to see. Again, open meeting law is specific. Mr. Mayor, on your agenda, item 6B6, would you consider an RFQ for engineer or his continued contracts? You need to vote on RFQ. I want to remind you, based on too many conflicts. The city engineers failed to address the drainage of Seventh and G, the improper installation of curbing better at 48 Stevens for a second time, the drainage is strong at 489, the lack of curbing better elsewhere, no ADA access along the new End-Off project on Great Basin as well as East Dalton, failure to address the one foot drop on the corner of 710 Avenue G, and yet, there's a hump in my parking lot, which causes the one foot drop, but if you go up and down that street in particular, the parking place, they have two utility boxes and no hump. Why didn't he hump them? The select force has got to stop, because trouble, consideration, and viability on my part, I need that corrected. He's had a failure to install water pit at 733 Great Basin as well as sewer connection, failure to address the damage to water shaft at 745 Great Basin, proper reimbursement for the injured party today, two water lines have not been given back to me, they took out when Washington fed that avenue, never saw it was connected. Failure to address an ADA access along the Mary Street project as well as notify and alert relocate, some codes have blocked access to sidewalks. Again, that's federal regulations, not a city, not a county, and yet, we're going by the wayside. Failure to enforce City Code that requires curbing better installation on in construction. Failure to ensure sidewalks are made of concrete as required by code. Failure to address the lack of curbing better across Stevie Street and Seventh to control drainage. I've had a second major problem with the rain that we just got. Mr. Mayor, you've been known, you've known about that problem for over three or four years, the railroad is causing part of that, and you get to address it. Failure to enforce proper ADA access to curbing better on 14th and 15th Street.
Thank you. That's your three minutes.
I need a reference, Mayor, 100R S 266.
Any other public comment? During the same time, we will close public comments at one item three. Mayor, discussion for possible action, approval of agenda including removal of agenda items and motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion from Councilman Stewart, I have a second.
Second.
Second, Councilman Flankis, in favor of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor, this will order item four, city partner reports, fire chief.
Only one quick thing I wanted to report on is, they probably haven't opened back the open burnings, so people could resume getting burn permits starting October 1st. Weather's cooling down now, people aren't even smoking coolers. They'll sit down on the same basis, they got to come get an application, we got to inspect what they're going to burn, so let's make that the public to have them put it out, but we'll be letting that start back up again on October 1st. Any questions?
I got a question. Looking at the next county commission agenda, they're using SB 74 funding to buy a whole slug of rescue equipment for Baker, Ruth, and McGill, and I believe probably, I think Looms, Baker, Ruth, McGill, anyway. I'm wondering if, you know, is there, is there money, and actually, it's just taxpayer money, to buy that duty and gun manpower to use it, my belief, and they also want to spend $187,000 on a quick response fire engine? What are we doing business? If we're, if we're the fire department, first initial response out, first responding, why are they going for this? Is there a pattern coming along that they're going to phase out, or do you have any?
I think probably what they're looking at is, you know, we got all those hydraulic tools, and I think, I know what they're looking at on that end, is, you know, McGill goes uncalled, Ruth goes, but their equipment is the same as ours was, 30 years old, and they're looking to phase it out. I mean, we've looked for years hoping to try to get some of that SB 74 money in, and I think it just, unless they say, here's just some money, you don't get none of it.
Yeah, because it is off 25 cents on sales tax.
Yeah.
Biggest majority of SB 74 revenue comes from within the city, Looms.
Right.
You know, they get some from mining and so forth, so that's why I'm pushing the attorney and everybody else to think about this. SB 74 money belongs to the citizens of the city of Ely, we are part of White High County, and we've got to draw a line to stand and say, we want some of the money too.
Right.
That's my whole push on that, so if they're going out and spending all that money, which is good, I mean, they got manpower to use this modern rescue equipment, that's outstanding. A quick response fire engine, where's it going to be stationed?
Well, it is the other thing, I've done some research since they had a meeting, three meeting to build or two meeting to build, they approved a half million dollars to build a fire station on Colquitt. I went and pulled some numbers on it, and it's like, Colquitt responds to like, three calls a year. Out of that, they have wildland engines, and then, they're responding to federal fires on BLM land, so it's like, why, if this just comes backed up, because I think the property where they had slated to put this building fell through, it didn't turn out to be J.J. Goldchase's property, turned out to be off of his property, so I think they got to look for a new location, so I don't know if that's going to be come backed up, but I don't know why they're making the big push on that. It's like, if you're going to spend half a million dollars, my thoughts was, why don't they go spend it on the departments that they have established, not on a department that responds to basically federal outland fires? I mean, they're going to spend half million of the county taxpayer money to go respond to, you know, BLM land, basically.
Because, you know, that, that quick response, you know as well as I do, Churchill found, they have members of their volunteer fire department in a rotation, take the quick response engine involved, so if it's called, they jet that way. So that makes me wonder, it wasn't mentioned in the agenda, where this engine is going to be stationed? Is it Station 1? So if the fire chief Brett North is not there, it just sits there, it's like it was back when they were running, they were in town shopping, they had go to town, the station, get an engine or ambulance, and respond like this. So I just want the public to know, this is another use of taxpayers' money, that is it really necessarily, again, the rescue equipment, that's fine, because the new tools , the eyewitness you guys used, are way better than what we had, one man can do a lot of work with one of those there, but I just don't understand, is, is we need to put our hand out there, walk right up and say, we need some of this funding.
I think that would be great for an agenda item. I think we're getting into discussion, celebration of issues.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, that's just one of those things, a lot of those items, is if everybody's in the dark until it hits the agenda, and then, there's never documentation on the agenda to go with it, so, first I heard of this one, I got the agenda too, so.
Great, thanks for that. Are you going to be back to the board about that?
Yeah, he just, he'd been gone all last week to, saying, and we've been getting some of our patent mad equipment, we're, a lot of this stuff showed up, so I'll probably get with him tomorrow, so I'll try and find a little more information on it.
Thanks, Chief. Police chief is in Peter Night, municipal court judge is on, we're going to do that as a report. City attorney?
Dr. Gerple.
City partner?
The comment has provided us a temporary solution to improve the internet speed out of this water treatment plant, until their fiber wound out is completed, we are working on this installation right now. Grants, I finally received a tracking number last week for the city's grant application, so we're still in the hunt, albeit very slow. I attended the PoolPacks Watcher webinar last Wednesday, entitled Sustaining a Respectful Work Environment for Women's, and I attended Traveling out of 3D Destination Development Grant Presentation last Tuesday on Convention Center.
Any questions, please. City clerk. City public works supervisor.
I wasn't getting any questions.
Any questions for the, for my, okay. City water operator, you have, they were a court city engineer.
I had a, had a meeting on Tuesday with End-Off for the next phase of Alton Street. It was a great meeting, and one of the things that came down from meeting is, End-Off basically stated that they have this project as fully funded, whether they get over grants or not, and so, they're removing full steam ahead on this project, and so, the anticipated construction date would be in 2024, and so, I thought that was great news, to hear them actually kind of officially committed to say that, so that's great. The county, their golf course well that they want to do for their irrigation, I've been having some small little conversations with them, trying to see what the city can do to assist them to keep this process rolling, and them trying to get that thing going. I had some conversation with them, they're digesting what we talked about, and we'll be getting back to me to see if there's anything that we can possibly do to keep that thing rolling, because that's a true, a big benefit to us, if we can get them off of us next month. Last week, we did have an internal meeting with our ardent partners, negotiating a meeting for water agreement with them, thought it went well, the city has some comments we're working through, getting back to them shortly. I also did receive an email from Senator Rosen's office, they were calling, or not calling, but I guess emails to request to see if we had proceeded, not necessarily proceeded, but had heard anything from the EPA, the government, for our centrally sewer project earbar that we received. And so, we responded to the letter that said that yes, we have heard from them, we've done everything we can at this point in time, and we're just waiting for them to actually open up the portals and we can complete our commitment. I thought that was a good email, trying to.
Have we had any information yet on, I mean, we've been using that golf course, our golf course well, like, quite a bit more this summer than I think we had in years past, have we received any information on how that might be affecting wells in the vicinity, or if there is any effect?
I did receive some stuff from, well, it's been probably a couple months ago, some monitoring of the groundwater, and so, I didn't see no major impacts from that situation, but it's probably something that maybe we should deal with, provide that back to town, or hydrologists who are helping with that, just to make sure that it's happening.
And do we have any concerns about how an irrigation well for the county may affect our municipal well, or if there would be any impact?
No, it's a good question, and, you know, from the information that I have, and the dealings with, when the mine set up and actually paid hydrologists to go out there and look at this location, and so, based on the information they provided, they did not anticipate impacts from that one.
Thanks. We'll move on to five reports, city council, please, this will be, of course, city building officials, across that paper.
Any questions?
Any questions for the building? Thank you. Now, city council reports, what's up, Councilman Williams Harper?
Just like to say, and I'll let Ed chime in, also, we have the car races, and they were absolutely wonderful, and I think if I realize how complimentary they are to the city, and how happy they are to be able to be in a lot of their events, and thank Ed, because he kind of pulled me into that stuff last year, but it was a great success, and I, I know I was only drinking water, but I think I said yes to being a navigator.
Really?
Yeah, you did. So, but anyway, if I do, the publicity version, what, what some of the things are paid, but I, just the feedback that they all say they're so happy to be in Ely, it was just really nice.
Councilman.
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Can I answer?
I could echo a little bit about what Jerry said, but first, you know, Jim was talking about tax money, and then, Colquitt deal, the tax money that I think is doing us tilt, and I'm getting sick and tired of the county never giving us any of that kind of money, I mean, a lieu of taxes for wildfires, exactly what tilt money shouldn't be, and we should be getting our share. Anyway, I got to tell, to echo what Councilman Williams Harper said about the, about the race, it's been good, it's, I think it's our 36th year, 37 year ago we met, but there was five guys, the only two guys still alive were Carl Madsen and myself, that started up, but anyway, the, the car race is also, the only event that is a total net for the community, we don't ask for any donations, no grants, it is 100%, but the entry fee will also, I told, the, that's the only event in High Line County that's actually net, and that's good for the community, and 97 raisers, that was good.
Great. Councilman Flankis?
We'll have much greater, I want to ask a question. I didn't see anything on the agenda about the government structure or program, this was in my focus. Is there any road on that?
Yeah, that was at the, and I wasn't at the last meeting, the meeting before, that they decided to send three, three people.
I should know, I tell the running for mine.
No.
Because as far as I'm concerned, if there's anything near to within the state of that that needs a real good infrastructure overall, is Ely, and I think it's very important that some members of the council and should attend that to see what we can do, because we're having the state hiring again someday, start paying Altman Street, and we have absolutely no input on what the city might want them to do, is what they figure they're going to do, and I think it's very important, we're the ones that live here, they do, and getting a study now, of some kind of impetus structure for the city, I think it is of major importance, I tried to conduct a little bit of something the other day, and I ran across some information, and I was talking to the depot, and when I told them what the situation was, and why am I concerned with Main Street, one of the things I've been, I've been under this committee is seeing the history of the city of Ely and White High County, and showing how important it has in forming the state of that. There's been more governors elected from White High County than any other part of the state of that, we do, and you take a look at what they've developed back in the old days, and what they have done, like with Highway 6 and 50 and what, and you look at the respective, have a mural on the wall down here on Luther Village, painted a lot same color as the building, because you can't stay unless you drive up to it, yeah, come and look, and the importance of it, and how important Lincoln Highway was to this community, and we're just, don't do the old work, or look at the past work as a part of this community to further the benefit of, and I like looking, so always set like the taxes, in this spirit. I worked at Canico at the bouncer section for a couple of years, one of my jobs was as the mine, did the proceeds of mines payments on a quarterly basis. I always want to check one for the county and one for the city, the city is getting lonely from the mine now, I think it's about time we start looking into what assets we are conserving and go for, we have a lot of work to be done in this community, and we need the funds to do it. Pastor Roberts for our report.
Thank you, Councilman Flankis. You have my report there, I don't know if there's anything else to add. Councilman, what? For Nevada Day?
No.
Oh, because of the casting part of that.
We'll move on to item six, items for discussion, possible action only at the Ely City Council,
the consent agenda, we have minutes from August 18th, and bills from September 14th.
Let me disclose that our pastor, the volunteer fire department, some of the bills benefit the volunteers, I feel they're best interest to the city, so I'll disclose that a little while.
Also, this goes if the next pastor is a member of volunteer fire department, and some claims on there, I believe it was one of them, but he will get treated differently than any other volunteer. Is there any other questions, or anything else? If there's not, so every hand motion to per the minutes and the bills.
Motion.
Motion from Councilman Flankis, but I have a second. Seconds from Councilman Williams Harper, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry this order. Move on to meeting business, item one, Mayor Robertson, discussion for possible action, annual performance evaluation of city building, of city building official Chair Peterson, including but not limited to consideration of character, alleged misconduct, professional confidence, or physical or mental health. Possible action includes, but is not limited to termination, suspension, demotion, reduction of pay reprimand, promotion, endorsement, engagement, retention, increase in pay, or no action. Come on down.
It's almost been a year, seems like it's been a couple, it's been quite the rolling, so, there's been a lot to learn, I've learned a lot, I've met a lot of people, I feel like I have the epiphany, I mean, I'm new to everybody, so it's easy to remember me, but everybody's new to me, so. Been a lot of positive strides, new positions come with uncomfortable challenges, get to identify weaknesses, usually that's the struggle of my life, but this year, I got to, you know, do a lot of self now, just identify my own weaknesses, which I'm working on, you know, I got to see a lot of my strengths in action, and kind of, you know, understand, you know, kind of where I am, and as a professional, where I need to improve, and I try to do that every single day, so. As far as performance, you know, I feel like I'm doing an adequate job of, you know, moving above and beyond, you know, what was kind of traditionally accepted in the position, and trying to benefit the communities the best I can, serve people, provide good customer service, generally be jovial at work, and pleasantly along with, although that may be, may be argued by some, but yeah, that's pretty much all that I have. Obviously, inflation's taken a little bit of a bite out of our budget as well, if I had to, you know, propose and ask, I would just ask to stay current with the rate of file, but in the spirit of flexibility, I'm always hoping to accept, accepting more.
I'm Chandler. I'd just like to say, personally, this last year, I really appreciated the professionalism and dedication you brought to the job, taking the initiative and going after the manufactured housing certifications, and helping us with the state fire marshal reviews, has been a huge help to the building community, and I say that as, as a member of the building community and our county, I've received a lot of positive feedback, and really appreciate you bringing your expertise and your willingness to our community to do this, it's not, certainly not a community for everybody, but that's why we like it.
Sure. Yeah, absolutely, we love here, I love here, my wife loves it here, we're very happy here.
Great, I keep telling people, you're active area here, hopefully later rather than soon. Don't make sure this is fair.
I like, also, I interface a lot with contractors out of town, developers, and they've had nothing but good comments from you, your professionalism, dealing with some of the local contractors, which we all know can be a little stubborn, you know, it's times have changed in the different types of construction, and I like the way you went out and researched and brought that new style of construction back into this community, that, you know, we're not going to just be stagnant, you know, we're going to move to the future, and again, you've answered all my concerns and questions in the county matter, and I think you've done a standing job.
I'd also like to add our.
If you could pull my folder for having trouble.
Thank you.
Test us.
If you're over the computer.
I'd also like to add that we saw quite a bit of your professionalism disworking with everyone, when we, we were talking, four, six, eight lady friends, but the community was quite happy, and we just handled that situation very well, it was very bad, so we want to thank you for that.
Thank you. That being said, to clarify your ask, how do you put it?
To stay current with rate of file, and I do understand it was very generous of the city, and, you know, very valued to all of you to take care of your employees, and very trying time, you know, going above the on contract is certainly, you know, admirable, it's something that's not seen every day, so I guess it's a little bit above a larger aspect, and I suppose for a cost of living decrease, but I just consider it fair that we stay with, you know, where everybody else is, and.
So you're asking for a 10%?
Correct.
Oh, you may.
How does that fit in, amount of treasure is asked?
Well, it fits in a little higher than, obviously, than what I budgeted, but everything that they've done so hard.
Higher than what you budgeted, so, you know, I think we just need to throw the budget off the side.
Yeah.
We got valuable employee, we got people, you know, we just need to do a better job in planning, like the, the councilwoman friend here said, so, I personally don't have no problem with that, he's up against a lot, and we have to treat him every bit as fair as the other employees.
That's a motion?
That's a motion.
I'll second that.
Motion for a 10% increase in the wages for the building official, made by Councilman Alworth, second by Councilman Spear, is there further discussion on that?
Yeah, I'd like to say thank you for doing. Yeah, I'd like to say thank you for dealing with the cockroaches, both two negative and little guys in town. It's been a tough job.